Local time is nine forty-two, eight forty-two, an out standard time. Let me go ahead and want to thank everybody for taking a little bit of time for a little bit of photo op this morning. So without further ado, let me go ahead and begin with our invocation. Mr. Gabriel Freeland, if you, Mr. Freeland, invocation? And then we'll have the pledge by Mr. Julius Elwood.
Good morning supervisors, guests, thank you very much. Say our prayer. Father in heaven, I thank you for this day. I ask you to bless our leaders, all three of our supervisors, their staff, their families, their friends. And I ask you to bless all the departments and programs that are in Apache County. And our guests that come to visit us on a daily basis. I ask you to continue to watch over us, to continue to guide us through all our daily activities. And make sure that we meet all the expectations that we thrive for and push ourselves to accomplish. I ask this in your name, amen.
To the like of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland and Mr. Elwood. Okay, with that, let me go ahead and proceed on with our agenda. Notice the public meeting, let me go ahead and call the Public Health Services District meeting to order. We have one agenda item here.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. Our first agenda item is with Public Health Services District. And it's just information only, it's to fill an IGA contract requirement, so there's no action needed on that item. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we appreciate it.
Move adjourn to help Services District meeting?
Second. We have the motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, one, let's go ahead and proceed further to our Library District meeting. We have one agenda item.
Good morning supervisors. Discussion on possible approval of an amendment to the meeting room policy of the libraries that would read, "The conference rooms may not be used for activities for which a fee is charged for any commercial enterprise, except for authors, historians, and speakers based on scheduling, availability, and not to exceed ten hours a month. No admission fees may be solicited or collected by the library."
Chairman, I make a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Shandley, accepted by Mr. Shirley. Questions, comments? Here and now, it's unanimous, so I'm going to call for the question and approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Move adjourn. Second.
Motion, adjournment by Dr. Shirley, it's accepted by Mr. Shandley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. We adjourned our Library District meeting. Okay, let me go ahead and call a regular Board Supervisors meeting to order here. We've got several items, first item, we do have Mr. Patterson.
Chairman, members of the board, this item is the Native American Beef Marketing. Kimberly Ozzy, Bill Lindman, and Padres Mesa Demonstration Ranch presents the highlights of the beef envelopment, and we'd like to welcome them, so.
You want to?
May I get, can I put a presentation up there on top?
Sure.
While she sets it up, supervisors, if I could give you some history where we're at, where we came from. Let's just take this whole region as a whole, especially the Navajo people and the Navajo lands. They were in a livestock marketing desert. And which subjects them to great steep discounts when it comes to livestock marketing. And being small producers in general, they were even more discounted. And a lot of people live great distances from sale barns, and they're underrepresented. They do not have access to like updated vaccines, updated genetics. So we're here to give you what we have been doing to change that image. We started off in Navajo beef, we started just down there in Padres Mesa. We are now training small producers. And we have valued their product, their livestock, from down here to four points above premium. That's a huge, huge gap. And we are building an image, and actually there's many tribes that are following suit. My take is if we teach people to do it the correct way, their land situation improves, their grazing practices improve, and their land stewardship and their animal health improve. We, as Padres Mesa, looked at the needs of small producers, primarily within Navajo. And looked at their needs, you know, how do I get access to small producers with bulls, vaccines? And we have started companies to address those situations. So whatever I have access to, I want to make sure that a Navajo producer only has two cows, has the same access and the same expertise. What we do is we combine all those producers and make it into a real high-quality product. We have our own feed yards, we have our own slaughter plants, we have our own food distributor, and we have our own customers. You know how many middlemen that cuts out, and the profits can go high. Like I said, even some white ranchers complain now that the Navajo have four points above the premium market. And that's a USDA livestock market for the whole region. They're four points above. With no commissions, no fees, and no nothing. What makes it so interesting is we can trace, traceability, all the way through. From when the animal is born to the plate it hits at Zenas Steakhouse. Not only that, is we have the vaccines to make animals healthy all the way through. So no antibiotics are needed. We also tell a story about the people behind it. If you'll notice, all these flyers, they highlight the people. So that's an interesting story that wants you to protect in the product. Also, whenever you eat the product, you're uplifting a whole community. And we have found out that Navajo beef has just won the Texas BBQ World Champion Cookoff. And we beat Texas beef. Isn't that incredible? Right now, we have fifteen hundred head in the pipeline. And with your support, I think we can go to five thousand. Just think, five thousand high-quality animals without being regulated to death. And given the expertise to the people, can really make a difference, you know, on the whole economics. With that, you've got vaccine distributors, veterinarians, you know, and you can put the whole, all the gears together. And so, I do want to introduce Kimberly Ozzy. She's the person that makes it happen from the producer, and actually is the face on the end product. So Kimberly Ozzy?
Thank you. Thank you, I'm Kimberly Ozzy, I work with Labatt Food Service and the marketing specialists for them. I've been with Labatt Food Service for about a good five years. Today I'd like to share with you the Native American Beef program. You can click on to the next slide.
This makes you a full-fledged member.
So, a little bit about Labatt Food Services and where we're at. We're a privately held company, we've been in business for about a hundred and ten years, with the tenth largest food distributor in New Mexico, Arizona, Texas. We're about a 1.2 billion in sales for Labatt Food Service. We have five different hubs, San Antonio, Dallas, Lubbock, Houston, and just recently acquired an Albuquerque, New Mexico. And then just some of the capabilities that our food service can do is we've got, we are the only direct source meat facility in New Mexico. We do, we take care of our own in-house beverages services and produce services, and then we build our own internal software development. So our competitors, of course, are the Cisco, the Shamrock, and so on. But with that, next slide please. We're able to create the Native American Beef program out here on the Padres Mesa Demonstration Ranch with the help of the fourteen R, who were the early adopters of the Native American Beef program. And right now, as of today, we have eighty-one participating families that are coming from thirty-seven different ranches that partake in the Native American Beef program. The first ever location to have the actual beef be was the Twin Arrows at the Zenas Steakhouse. Since the program has started, there's about four million dollars being generated back to communities. There's approximately four thousand Native American beef cattle that we've purchased. And that sustaining thing that these cattle, these animals are coming and raised on tribal lands coming from Native American, and also forty-five day weaned out with a vaccination plan and also an EID program. We're very involved in the community such as the different Padres Mesa events there, the branding. We're also very in tune with the community and the four HFFAs, have stuff to get the youth also involved. And then just highlighted a lot of the press releases. You can Google us and find us, all of the highlights about Navajo beef, Native American beef, the fourteen R. Next slide please. So in raising all of this, we're able to build a brand. And we like to build, we wanted to build our brand around the quotes of race on tradition, built on quality. So that we're focusing back on the accountability, traceability, and also the sustainability to produce back to our customers. The Native American beef is an all-natural beef, no hormones. It's a quality grass-fed grain, all finished on an all-vegetarian diet. The animal lives its life in two hundred fifty days at the feed yard in Chapel, Nebraska, and stays there. Tell harvest about twelve to thirteen hundred pounds. And then moved on to fabrication into Henderson, Colorado, and then makes its weight a brush. And then back to our Labatt Food Service warehouse. Next slide please. Next is just a timeline of the Native American Beef program as a whole. So if you can see in twenty-eleven, it was just in a concept and an idea. Twenty-twelve, we gave it wheels, and let's say, let's put this into action, see what we can do. We partnered with Padres Mesa and also the fourteen R Ranch, which is a part of the Newlands area. And then in twenty-thirteen, we're able to create a customer. And with MS program, it wouldn't be sustainable if we didn't have a customer. So it was very important that we were blessed with the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise to give it a home for Navajo beef. In twenty-fourteen, our product, of course, we could only supply for a four months. Four months, and so it was my job to go out and find more good quality cattle. So I reached out to our neighboring tribes, which is Hickorya, Muscalero, and Pueblo de Slatto, who was able to help us with the product. In twenty-fifteen was our largest staging of the harvesting facility. We staged one thousand one hundred eighty head in the harvesting facility. And then in twenty-sixteen, as you can imagine, was our biggest pounds sold back to the communities. And then we also gained two more new producers, which is from the Grasshopper Cattle Association, right from White Mountain, and also the Pueblo of Akama. In twenty-seventeen, which just recently changed, but at the time, fifty percent of the cattle were coming from Navajo. And right now, we're in competition with Muscalero, Muscalero stepped up, so we're now leading the cattle industry within this little small program. Next please. Next is just the lifeline of the actual cattle and what we call talk about sustainability capability. We work with third-party audit verification of where food comes from. IMI, they issue a seventeen-digit code, a button to the calf as we start with the Native American Beef rancher. So there's different qualifications before the rancher makes the program that we go through. So I'll go over here in a minute. And then we take the animal and we take them to Chapel, Nebraska. Billy Hall, who's from Veneta, Oklahoma, is our cattle buyer. We take then those animals to the harvesting facility, as I was saying. And they stay up there for two hundred fifty days. Then we do further processing to our direct source meats, and we wait for our chefs or our customers to call. The product is always a fresh product till we wait for them to call. And then it goes over to Labatt side, and then we are our own customers. We have our own casinos, schools, senior centers, supermarkets, and then creating that chain of Native Americans supporting Native Americans. And so with third-party audit, we're able to create traceability and follow up just in case you, the consumer was to eat the beef and something was to go wrong, we have that traceability to go back to see where is it that we had failed.
And also make the producers better.
Right, and you're creating that image, flipping the image from, you know, the devaluing of Native American cattle as we drive down the road, as you would all can see, sometimes we see those animals on the side of the road, and we get that misconception of maybe this is how all the cattle look out here. And so through this beef program, we're able to flip that image and say, Native Americans can raise high-quality cattle, just as anybody in there. We are still competitive, the CDA label, Chairman's Reserve, and Silver Spoon Reserve. Okay, next slide please. To make the program, you've got to qualify four, so we go out to the producers, and we ask the producers that we're looking for a fifty-one percent or better English breed. And only because if you invest in an English breed, we can still grade the animal to be about a choice to prime. What we don't take in the program, of course, is on the right-hand side, your Corrientes, your Bregas, your Brahmas. Not that they are a bad market, but we do work with the producer and help him find a secondary market right before they go into the Native American Beef program. So the producer is never, ever left alone, but we continue to go back to them until they make the Native American Beef program. Next please. And we've talked a lot about educating the producer. So we're constantly in front of them about the quality and investing in genetics. Take the time to go out and purchase your bulls, looking at EPDs, looking at birthing weight, having weight, things like that. And that bottom half right through there, within the Native American Beef program, we have our rebate to our producers. So the producer now is not just ending the story at the sale barn, but is continuing to follow it all the way down to the center of the plate. And we also give them performance and data so that the producer can continue to improve their herd and forecasting them in an image of about two to three years within their herd. So that EID number, there is a seventeen-digit number that tracks them all the way to the center of the plate. As you can see, highlighted in yellow, all of those calves were able to grade to a choice to prime, very high in numbers. So this producer ended up taking thirty-five dollars every time a calf graded choice to prime. So one, two, three, four, five, he gets like seven hundred and fifty dollars right there.
Over.
That's the producer got to collect again. Next please. Within our program, why we're so unique, and this is very difficult, challenging, we purchase the entire animal. So it is our job as a sales rep, sales team, we have to find a home for every single cut that is up there. Obviously, you know, your high, your mid-cuts, from the short loin to the sirloin and the rib, those are your probably most expensive cuts. Everything around it can contribute in your end cuts, and that's galore of ground beef. And so because I talked about our schools and our senior centers, these would be perfect fit for our schools and our senior centers, the specs that they are looking for. That it is a natural product, it's home, it's grown, it's locally sourced, aged, sourced, verified, be perfect fit. Next please. And this is just some more of the education that we go back out into the community. We've learned that a lot of our producers don't understand what a prime choice select looks like. And so we go back out there with a reinforcing team and educating them so that they can connect why is it that they're looking and investing in genetics, herd health, and so on. So as of today, next slide please. Prime within the Native American Beef program alone, very, very small boutique operation. We are at a five percent grading out to be prime to high. At the US national level, they are at a five point seven percent. So we fall very shortly, prime is a prime product. In the choice side of the marbling, the USDA grades at a seventy point forty percent. Native American beef, we're at a ninety-three percent grading choice or better, which is huge.
Huge.
And all of that is just increasing the genetics, the aging, the muscling, and also the marbling of the beef. Next please. Another thing that we go out to the community is investing in vaccinations. Most of the times, it's either the producer is afraid to learn, doesn't know, afraid to ask questions, or they just can't afford it. We create a team, partner with Padres Mesa Grant, and we go back to the community and we educate them further on, letting them know that it's not all that scary, but it's really an investment that you're doing into your cattle herd. Okay, next please. We also do another education side to the producer, helping them tighten up that gestation period. So all of their calves have that, all of that uniformity involved in there so that they can prepare for sale day, so that they're making and reaching that maximum return as a producer. So next please. Within our program, we also established a vaccination guideline for all of our animals, making sure that they have this. The producer's job is to record, make sure everything is followed step by step. Also more education about deworming, and how to deworm, when to deworm. Next please. One more. An overview of just what Native American Beef program is and what Labatt Food Service kind of follows our criteria is we ask that all of our producers have a Zoetis background beef vaccination program involved. And we also ask that our producers, I can say proudly, ninety-nine point nine percent of our producers are beef quality assurance. All of our cattle must be approved the day of the pickup, two weeks prior, and then we have to fill all these records that are up today. Next please. So that's papers like the vaccination records, IMI tag, health certificate, and brand inspection that the producer is responsible for. Next please. And here's kind of what we pay out. So we use the USDA market report, and we do a four-dollar premium attached to the producer. So if the producer is vaccinating, gives me animals that are forty-five days weaned, and also their records, and meets everything in that criteria, I give them another four cent on top of the USDA market report. So increasing that value, which is now, let's say at one forty-five eighty-two, plus the four, goes up to one forty-nine. And so this producer, one animal, would cost nine thousand five hundred dollars.
I guess, that is the top-end market for any producer in this region, that's including New Mexico. So at that particular time, that was the highest of the market. And she just added four cents plus a thirty-five dollar rebate. Plus, that is unheard of, unheard of.
Next slide please. And there's no commissions in this, it's all, everything goes back to the producer. Here's the financial impact of twenty-seventeen, of the producer brought two hundred and eight head, four hundred and twenty-seven steers. Their total weight, you know, their average weight in that, which is really good, five hundred and sixty-four pounds, about five eighty-eight in steers. The market there, that already includes the four cent premium in there as well. And that's the gross that the producer took home in heifers and steers. Next please. And this is just the inventory sheet of all of the animals that we bought within the twenty-fifteen or twenty-seventeen. So as of last year, we're at a ninety-nine percent prime to choice. Next please. This is where all our cattle come from. They were both in New Mexico and also Arizona, thanks IMI, we're able to trace back to all of those. Next please. Animals make it to our Chapel Feed Yard in Chapel, Nebraska. The animals then are also taken care of there in a low-stress handling environment. The vaccinations go up there, the Pfizer vaccination, Zoetis program, and they all are fed two hundred and forty days out on all vegetarian diet. Next please. And here are some data that we've collected and we've learned from, which is really great because we report this back to the producer and we show them where they need to improve and where optimum should be coming from. So in twenty-fourteen, as you can see, we purchased five hundred and seventy-six head, our death loss was a four point five, and we were only grading about eighty-nine point nine percent of choice to prime. Compared that to twenty-seventeen, we increased our head to nine hundred and ninety-four, and our death loss is still at a four point two, but which is still good. And then also, we are at a ninety-nine percent prime to choice. Next please. Within our program, we're a very small boutique operation, so we're not killing thousands every month. We are killing sixty-four, forty, eighty, small numbers per month. And we have to wait for our customer to see how many our customers, did our customer base grow, did it increase? Where are we at? Otherwise, we'd be stuck with a bunch of frozen products. So we have to constantly manage those two things on every day, seeing two, almost two years in a forecast. Next. And this is just the cattle that we bought and the harvesting, what it looks like back and forth that I just talked about. Next please. And the bigger piece of the pie, you know, and in this program, I like to let everyone know that the rancher here is who gets the bigger piece of the pie. Forty-three percent of everything at this program is always going back to the rancher. The other two percent is going up to the two percent, but yeah, the other, the fifty-three percent, we are being responsible for paying the feed loss to feed these animals out. Next please. Talked about optimum with the data that we learned over the years. Next please. We're able, without optimum, we don't have a goal, we don't know where to go with our producers. Next please. If we have a goal, we're able to bring the product back home, we're able to have participation, we're able to continue to keep the book off the shelf, and not have Native American beef just become another novelty. Next please. With increasing optimum and reaching optimum, we are able to bring down the cost. Hit it, one more sign. We're able to bring down the cost. So this is our new goal for our producers. As six years into the program, our producers, we ask that the calves be delivered no less than five hundred and fifty-five pounds. Days on feed, we'd like to see them finish at two hundred and forty days, harvest out no less than twelve hundred and fifty pounds. Average daily gain should be three pounds every day, and the death loss less than one percent with a grade out of a ninety percent. So these are our standards for our producers as of this year. Next please. All improving through genetics and herd health. Next please. We do all of those things, we can add more revenue back to our producer. We can bring down the feed convergence, lay it lesser days on feed. And we can also input the cost on lowering the medicine, the ownership, the processing, and also bring down that cost of the beef so that it is happier and more affordable to the customer. So lowering the beef cost continues to grow the Native American Beef program. Next please. In an optimum world, if the producer was an actual to make and reach that optimum, they are still making, there's still ten thousand dollars in there that they can still achieve. That's just a side-by-side example. Okay? Next. Next. Here's our marketing pieces a little bit. As you can see, IMI stands very strong with us in third-party auditing. We have to keep on files, all of the vaccines and stuff for a good three years in case of anything. But if you visit their website, they have Native American beef right up there with several stories of our families that are participating in the program. Next. Some of the marketing pieces that we do also, we jump right in there with the casinos, have to bridge our menus. We were awarded the twenty-fourteenth, you know, Expo Cookoff, and just recently, Juana Cookoff in Texas. And then very in tuned also with the casinos that are around. But basically just creating that social economical good for the community so that they could also come back. Next please. And just more stories of our producers. Next. Thank you.
One more point there, supervisor, if I may. This program is so unique, and I'm really proud of it because up in the livestock business for many, many, many years, this is the first opportunity I ever had to build a ranch from scratch, from nothing. I got this guy before I even had a cow on the ranch. And now we've built a brand, a beef label. And we pay such attention to detail that a person that only owns two calves means just as much to us as a person that's got eight. And we try to co-op them, and then we get young people excited because you can see all the opportunities it is creating for young people to get involved. So it's So it's a fantastic thing, and I like to see, you know, our elders, when we give them a check, they have never seen that kind of money before. And you're leading the industry now. And actually, if everybody follows suits, you will be the number-one livestock leverage and driver of this whole region. Because you'll be the biggest and the finest and everything. So any questions?
Thank you. Gentlemen?
We have a big ranch, you know, near Seligman.
Oh.
About 500,000 acres. Is there any plans to bring the slaughterhouse and raising the cattle home?
No, we have two problems with that. First of all, remember the traceability factor, it's got to be designated IMI on native ground, not bought ground. In other words, the ones in Colorado will not qualify. Now, we can make another market for them, but they will not qualify for this market. This market is just for Native American verified ground. So it has to be born on Native American ground. Okay, so that's this marketing approach. Now, there's other marketing approaches where we can help. We do not support the idea of starting into a slaughterhouse business because that portion of this whole chain is the least profitable and the more worrisome. So we'd rather just contract that section out. Remember, our job is to create revenue stream back to the people that really need it. So if we meet a demand and we raise that retail market, that value of that animal goes right up with it. So you're just not relating it on sale barns. If you take animals to a sale barn, you're sending it to someone like me back in my younger days, and I'm just putting them into a package and reselling them.
Any other questions?
No.
I do appreciate the presentation that has been across. Of course, you know, we heard Labatt's presentation to Resource Development a few months back, so we appreciate all that you're doing for the area of Sanders. So with that, if there aren't any other questions, I guess we'll go ahead and proceed further with our agenda. I think this is more of an informational type, so again, thank you. Mr. Shee, let's go ahead and move down to item two, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Chairman, members of the board. The item two is the consent agenda, consists of items A through K, and we'd recommend approval.
Make a motion, Chairman. Second. Questions, comments? Are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three in favor, none opposed, motion passes. Item three, Recorder's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Recorder's Office is wanting approval of an IGA between the Secretary of State and Recorder's Office regarding the Electronic Registration Information Center, if you call it, system to provide cross-state registration, detection, and correction. It will help us to be more accurate roles. And the cost for this is $486.67 annually, head out of our regular budget.
Motion by supervisor Shandley, second, questions? Here none, call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, all in favor? Next item is also Recorder's Office.
Okay, we, we're looking for approval and agreement to continue applications for our existing reporting system, called the County Reporter. This is our system that records our deeds and other important documents. The new agreement will terminate in 2023. The cost is $6,880 every six months, and it'll be funded from our budget.
Motion. Motion by supervisor Shandley, second by supervisor Shirley, questions? Here none, call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item is Recorder's Office, number five.
We're looking for approval of an agreement to continue applications for our voter registration system named Power Profile. This agreement will terminate in June 2018. Fiscal year 18 fees have been waived pending the approval of this agreement.
Thank you. Your motion? Supervisor Shandley, second, supervisor Shirley, seconds. Okay, questions? Here none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, three in favor, none opposed, unanimous. Okay, Assessor's Office, item six.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
The Assessor's Office would like approval to update the Certified Appraiser Job Description Range 48 and hire Mr. Darren Rasmussen to fill the position with a starting salary of $58,000. The salary will be funded with our existing budgeted funds.
Make a motion. Second. Shandley, second by supervisor Shirley, questions, comments? Here none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, Engineering, item seven.
Good morning, Supervisors, item seven is a discussion of possible approval of a possible amendment to our existing intergovernmental agreement with Navajo Division of Transportation. This is to include specifically the safety boot projects in 402. You have before you the details of that partnership. The important parts is that we would be partnering with the Navajo DOT to add material to drainage structures to C402 with a reimbursement of $606,679 from the Division of Transportation to the county. And we recommend approval.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion, second.
Shandley, motions, second by supervisor Shirley, Mr. Shandley?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman. I wanted to thank Farron and District 1 and 2 staff in helping get this done. This has been my two-and-a-half-year ordeal to Mr. Shirley's commentary yesterday, and your folks' expertise up here helped me, helped us get this pushed forward, and I appreciate it.
All right, any other, not, call for the questions, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, all in favor, none opposed? Thank you. Next item is, again, Engineering.
Supervisors, this item is a discussion of possible approval to update our safety boot program and to include a prescription eye protection program with that, with that policy. The update to the safety boot program will be on an annual basis. You will recall that, some of you will recall that when we adopted this program, it was on a biannual basis. Our experience has shown that it's wholly insufficient for our road workers. Their boots are not making it that two years, they're having to buy their own. And so we would recommend that you would amend our fee policy to an annual basis. We also received a request to include a prescription eye protection part of the program. This program, this part of the policy will allow for those individuals who wear prescription eyewear to receive a $140 benefit, which would be a reimbursed-type benefit if they order prescription safety eyewear. So we had that before, we recommend approval.
Your motion? Supervisor Shirley, move, second. Questions, comments? Here none, call for the question, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, three in favor, none opposed?
Thank you.
Supervisor Shandley, item nine?
Yes, sir. This Fair Housing Month is a proclamation we've done in previous years. I just ask your support, it keeps all of us in conformity for the CDPG grants.
For motion, proclamation. Supervisor Shirley, second by supervisor Shandley. Questions, comments, none? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, three in favor, none opposed? Next item, Clerk of the Board, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, this is a discussion of possible approval of a resolution delegating authority for the Clerk of the Board, approval of special event liquor license and temporary premises extensions, patio permit publications. This item was tabled from a previous meeting, and we'd recommend approval.
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, supervisor Shandley, the second, questions, comments? Here none, call for the question, all in favor, accept and approve?
Aye.
Say ayes?
Aye.
Aye, three in favor, none opposed? Thank you, next item?
Chairman, members of the board, this item is, there's been some additional information received and we'd ask to have it tabled for the next meeting, maybe possibly the April 17th. If that would be okay with you.
Okay, is it a request for tabling to the next April 17th?
Yes, sir, so all the committee chairmen have got to read it since the agenda was published.
Okay. Motion to table to April 17th, is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second. Second by supervisor Shirley. Taking a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, so action of the item is tabled till the 17th. Next item, 17, or number 12?
Yes, gentlemen, discussion of possible authorization to reelect the following individuals to the Apache County Industrial Development Authority. John Lane was going to be termed out and will be reinstated to expire on March 2024, and we'd recommend approval.
Motion? Supervisor Shirley, move, second. Shandley, questions? Here none, all in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, three and zero. Item 13?
Pursuant to ARS 4212052, possible, sorry, approval of the properties to be reclassified due to a 2018 property tax classification appeals. The Apache County Assessor's Office is recommending that all 22 appeals be granted. Again, gentlemen, this is been approved and all 22 were given the request they required, or requested, I should say, request, requested.
Make a motion. Okay, supervisor Shandley, motions, question, comments? Here none, all in favor for approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, three and zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item 14?
Discussion of possible approval of the renewal of the contract with Johnson Appraisal to conduct the Board of Equalization hearings effective May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2020. We'd recommend approval.
Okay.
Your move, second.
Motion by supervisor Shirley, supervisor Shandley, seconds, questions, comments? See none, all in favor for approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, three and zero, unanimous. Item 15?
Discussion of possible approval of appointment of Ryan Patterson to serve as the Arizona County Insurance Project Board of Trustees and Farron Crosby as the alternate, and we'd recommend that approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion by supervisor Shirley, second by supervisor Shandley. Questions, comments? See none, all in favor for approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, three and zero. Next item, County Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the Board so wishes, file an possible executive session for the advice presented to ARS 34431-0383 and possible discussion and our action regarding the notice of thank you, Jake Robbins, concerning the road abandonment. I don't know whether we can go into executive session since they're in cases that wants to, it's a very straightforward matter.
Okay, Christian, I don't see any, Chairman. Yes, sir, we got the information, thank you for the information, so...
With that, not waiting to executive session, real briefly, this is approximately 40 years ago. The county had a road. It was supposed to be banned and through board action, it wasn't recorded, and the gentleman is asking if that would be done now, based on this sort of amount. We think it's appropriate, we think it's fair, we think it's reasonable, so we would recommend approval.
Okay.
Your move, second.
Supervisor Shirley, motion, second by supervisor Shandley. Thank you. If there are any questions, I guess I'll call for a question for approval, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, three and zero. With that, we are down to notifications, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, gentlemen, this is notification for the following meetings, where two or more members of the Apache County Board of Supervisors may be in attendance. Item one is Eastern Counties on April 18th, Small Counties, April 18th at 5:30, and County Supervisors Association Meeting on the 19th, all taking place at the CSA Building. So those have been notified.
Okay. All right, with that, item 18, call to the public, do we have any, Mr. Patterson?
No, sir, no, Chairman, we do not.
Okay, with that, we...
We did our adjournment.
Motion by supervisor Shirley.
Second.
Second by supervisor Shandley, all in favor for adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, we officially adjourn at 9:27, not standard time.